Breach the hour six P M Monday, March the sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is the meeting, this Tesla, excuse me, City Series Planning Commission, regular meeting, being held in person. It's also available to people on Zoom, so we'll be checking in with them from time to time. So we begin the meeting with the call, call the order.
You start with the Pledge of Allegiance and then I will call the roll.
Okay. Pledge of Allegiance. Now we can call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Del Nero, Commissioner Jamu, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Otero, and Chairperson Ketchel.
Here. Do we have any conflict of interest, any commissioners, any items on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to citizens communications. While the planning commission welcomes and encourages participation in planning commission meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the planning commission and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the planning commission from taking action on any matter which is not on the post-agenda, unless it's determined by to be an emergency by the planning commission. Citizens are entitled to address the planning commission on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Please come to the podium on any agenda item, on non-agenda items, excuse me. Seeing none, public comments will now be accepted through Zoom. For those participating through the web, please raise your hand to request to speak using the hand icon located at the bottom right of your screen. If you are participating by phone, please press nine on your phone. Names will be called in the order the requests are received and your microphone will be unmuted when it's time for you to speak. Do we have anyone?
I see no hands raised on Zoom right now.
Okay. Clerk, have we received any public comments through mail?
No, I have not received any.
Okay, then we'll move to our next item on the agenda, which is the consent calendar. If one item is clerk's report of posting the agenda for the regular meeting of the planning commission meeting in March sixth, two thousand and twenty-three was posted on March twenty twenty-three. We need a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion, we accept it.
Thank you. Get a second.
Commissioner Del Nero, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Jamu,
Aye.
Commissioner Otero,
Aye.
And Chairperson Ketchel.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Now we go to the public hearings on tonight's meeting. We have four of them scheduled on the meeting tonight. First item is tentative parcel map. That's T P M twenty-three dash zero one. Proposal for a tentative parcel map to subdivide an existing two point five nine acre parcel into a one point two nine acre and a one point three oh acre parcel located at nine four eight Richland Avenue, Robert Smith. Applicant sequoia status, pardon me for my voice. It's exempt per section one five three one five. And can we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, uh, planning commission. This is a pretty simple project. It is a subdivision, as was stated. It would create a one point two nine acre and a one point three acre parcel on Richland Avenue. It's in the northern part of the city. Uh, the site is surrounded by other uh, single-family residential properties. There's a utility, a property on by the city of Modesto, just adjacent to the northwest that will not have any effect on this property. At the time of, um, if this is approved, um, if a building permit for our new home is uh, applied for, then um, they'll need to go through the regular process for that. And uh, including getting an encroachment permit for a new driveway. Uh, this is all very typical and um, there's nothing out of the ordinary on on this project. Um, so staff recommends that uh, the planning commission approve this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the commission?
Yeah, a little one question. Page twelve, is is that going to be like a schematics or what it could be?
Uh, page twelve is the assessor's parcel map that shows uh, what exists already for that whole neighborhood. Um, the property in question is the largest um, property that has um, number four, and it has a circle with a two, and it says two point five, yeah.
Just got a little confused, sorry.
No worries.
Any other questions? At this point, we'll open a public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to come and speak on this matter? Please state your name when you come to the podium. No one interested in speaking on this item? Then we'll go back and see, do we have anybody on Zoom?
I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, have we received any correspondence?
No, I have not received any.
Close the public hearing and bring it back to the planning commission for discussion and or a motion. From my point of view, it's just, uh, as as staff said, it's a very simple, straightforward parcel. Well, let the house off on one piece. Pretty good size, their their painting. And then whatever they want to do with the other. Do we have any idea what goals are at this point?
Um, there's potential that um, there's, there's one house there and there would be a one more house on the other parcel.
Okay. I guess at that point, then we'll, I'll entertain a motion. Somebody wants to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion on it.
I'll second.
It's um, exempt from uh, secret guidelines and approved twenty-three dash zero one P P M, subject to findings and conditions contained in the attached draft resolution three oh six.
You get a second? We have a motion, we have a second. Can we call the roll, please?
Yes, Commissioner Del Nero, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Jamu,
Aye.
Commissioner Otero,
Aye.
And Chairperson Ketchel.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. This is another tentative parcel map, number twenty-three dash zero four. Proposal for tentative parcel map to subdivide an existing four point six one acre parcel, acre remainder parcel of the series gateway center project into a three acre commercially zone lot and a one point six one acre remainder parcel located at four two one seven Mitchell Road. Hawkins and Associates Engineering, Inc. are the applicant sequoia. It's a consistent with previously adopted mitigated negative declaration. And with that, can we have the staff report, please?
Sure. Um, item number three that we're talking about right now is closely related to item number four, which will come next. They both involve the same uh, area. Um, this is the subdivision portion that would allow a three acre parcel um, for the, the next item, which is a specific plan, site plan uh, for tractor supply, which is a martial retail building to be located and constructed at the series gateway center in the remainder junior box area that we've been calling it. Um, normally, we would bundle these two um, under one item like of vesting tentative parcel map with a specific plan, site plan. However, uh, the applications came in at different times, so it just kind of worked out this way. Um, and there's, there's no problem with it being separate items. It's just that it will, it will involve kind of a short staff report for this one and then a little bit more in-depth um, staff report for the next part and um, a kind of contingent on each other, so.
I had wondered why they were separate on the agenda.
Yeah, and now that I'm
That explains it.
Yeah, now that I'm kind of thinking about this, um, because this item is separate, if you approve it, it's all it's doing is subdividing the land. It's not getting to the next item, which is allowing the land to be developed with a retail building on it, so. If you allow that subdivision, then it's splitting the remaining parcel at certain gateway centers so that it becomes palpable with entitlement like the next, like the next item. Um, so you, it would be safe to approve this tentative parcel map. Without first reviewing the next item, because the next item is stands alone as its own, as its own item.
Yeah.
So I just want to point that out.
Thank you, appreciate that.
So again, this is a, it'd create a three acre uh, commercial zone lot. Uh, the remainder parcel would um, just consist of the internal driveways um, within the series gateway center and the uh, stormwater basin. Um, again, it's a pretty simple commercial subdivision. This is the remainder parcel and staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. Any commissioners have questions at this point?
Any other subdivisions that are submitted, still waiting approval?
This is the very last one anticipated. I mean, there's, there's really no room for, for anything else.
Okay. That I guess then we'll open a public hearing on this item. This is the parcel map. Anyone in the audience want to speak on this? Please come to the podium, give your name. Okay, can't get any takers tonight. Anyone on Zoom for this item?
I see no hands raised at this time.
And do we have any correspondence?
Oh, excuse me. Oh, Mr. Hawkins had raised his hand, but then he didn't. So, Mr. Hawkins, do you want to speak? Yes, he does.
Okay.
Mr. Hawkins.
Mr. Hawkins.
I've unmuted your mic, Mr. Hawkins. Go ahead.
You can unmute yourself, Mr. Hawkins.
Got you. I'm sorry. I just wanted you to, to know that I was here and available to answer any questions and to thank staff and everyone for all their efforts in this whole project. And as Christopher said, this is pretty much the last of the subdivision of it and it's just been, uh, this has been a nice project to work on for the last, I think, twelve or fourteen years for me. But anyway, uh, just wanted to make sure that you knew I was available if you had any questions.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on the matter? Apparently not. We'll close the public hearing and bring this back to the commission for discussion and motion.
Make a motion.
I guess not.
I'll make a motion, accept the proposal tentative parcel. Decorate the series gate center. Zero two four T P M. All the conditions contained in that resolution. B C three oh eight.
Okay, thank you. You get a second?
Second.
And a motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Del Nero,
Aye.
Commissioner Jamu,
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Otero,
Aye.
And Chairperson Ketchel.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. And our next item on the agenda, which is item four, is specific plan, site plan, twenty-two dash twenty-two. That's proposal for a specific plan, site plan to construct a twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and two square foot retail building at the series gateway center located at forty-two one seven Mitchell Road, series gateway center. Sequoia status is this is also consistent with the previously adopted mitigated declaration, and this is the property on which we just approved the tentative parcel map application. And we get a staff report, please.
Yes, I am sharing my screen now so that everyone can see the site plan uh, for this project. It is within the series gateway center area and it includes um, a tractor supply, a commercial retail building, as well as a garden center and outdoor display and a forage shed. There are a total of eighty-nine parking spaces that are proposed, including uh, landscaped areas and um, the, the project fits in with the overall um, flow and and um, previous designs for the series gateway center. Uh, the series gateway center has, as Rod Hawkins mentioned earlier, has been going on, it's been a project going on for over ten years. And over that time, there have been a few, I would call them minor changes to the plan. Um, overall, um, including before there was uh, a previous approval for a Circle K gas station, and that changed uh, last year to a Union seventy-six uh, gas station. So there's some minor changes that have happened and as the, as the site, including the hotel site that was previously approved, as those different puzzle pieces, I'll call them, have um, been refined. Each parcel has been subdivided from the remainder, and this, this is, this will be the last piece that, the last piece of the puzzle, I'll call it. Um, and it would allow this junior box store to go in. Um, this uh, is in the regional commercial zone within the Mitchell Road corridor specific plan area. Um, this project meets the planning, the, the, the general plan and, and zoning policies that we have, um, including the, the Mitchell Road corridor specific plan uh, policies. What we're looking for in those policies is, are things like promoting infill, which this does, uh, promoting the development of commercial um, uses that are compatible with the surrounding uses, which this fits in very well. Um, it also supports the, the focus that the city has on developing commercial near the Mitchell Road S R ninety-nine interchange. And it has a regional uh, commercial design, so we're expecting that this store will draw people from um, not only our city, but the surrounding community. Um, and it will be a good addition to uh, also our sales tax base. So these are kind of the things that we look for. And uh, staff supports this uh, project. I can also, also show you um, some of the elevations on the next page.
Please.
And if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer them. Thank you.
Would you say a little bit about the nature of the business itself? You defined it as tractor supply. What exactly does that constitute?
Uh, sure. And uh, the applicants here as well, if, if you'd like to ask them, I'll give it my best shot, though.
Okay.
Um, it's a store that sells um, kind of a hodgepodge of things. You can buy um, some clothing, some tools, um, um, pet supplies, um, um, like agricultural types of things. I don't think that their focus is, is really on tractors, actually. Um, it's kind of a misnomer, so.
Yeah, sounds like.
Yeah, it's more of a country store that you can buy a lot of different things at. And then I'll let the applicant correct me if I got that a little bit off.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Okay, well, thank you. Any questions from the commission at this point? No, well then let's open the public hearing and I hear somebody is here to talk about this one, so please come and state your name and your comments, Mr. Pratt.
Uh, Dave Pratt of Series. I don't know, you know, there's a tractor supply in Turlock. Have any of you been to that one before? Yeah, it's got a lot. It's smaller than like, than like Home Depot, but they got a lot more stuff for farming. What, what they, I can.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on the matter? Yes, sir.
Uh, Porro, Calgill Development. Uh, we're the developer here. We're purchasing the property and building practice by company. Uh, this is our twenty-fifth that we've done in the state of California. Um, and it's a, it's an agricultural retailer. The Canada rural areas, uh, we don't sell any tractors. Like Chris said, it's kind of a misnomer. Uh, what we do supply like uh, farming equipment, feed, uh, things for rural and agricultural areas, and that's why we feel that the city of series is really a good fit for, for this concept.
Makes sense. Anyone have any questions? I guess that's all we need from you. Thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak on this matter? Seeing no one else? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, I guess with that, we can close the public hearing. And again, bring it back to the planning commission for discussion. Seems pretty straightforward. I guess tractor supply is kind of like auto supply. They don't sell cars. It's an auto supply business. Anyone? Thoughts, comments? Likes, dislikes?
Yeah, and I, oh, sorry. No, I think that's um, good for the surrounding communities as well to be able to utilize some of the services that tractor supply has.
Okay. Yeah, I agree. It's, it's, I'm excited to see this come in. It's something that we haven't had before and I agree with the gentleman. This is probably a pretty good location, uh, series in general, and that looks like a great spot for it, too, uh, to pick up regional business. So uh, I'm, I'm excited to see this. It's, it's wonderful from my perspective. That's my thoughts. Anyone want to make a motion?
Motion, yeah, so.
Okay.
You betcha. Uh, uh, accept a proposal entitlement found consistent with the original negative declaration, series gateway project. And approval of twenty-two, twenty-two S P S B. Findings conditions contain that stress draft revolution, B C twenty-three oh nine.
We get a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. You call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Del Nero,
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Jamu,
Aye.
and Commissioner Otero,
Aye.
and Chairperson Ketchel.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Welcome to series. And our fourth public hearing of the evening, it's item number five on the agenda. This is a little bit, something a little bit different than what we normally see. This is an amendment to the zoning ordinance. This is zoning ordinance text amendment, C O T A twenty-three dash zero three. So proposal consider a zoning ordinance text amendment to the off-street parking standards in chapter eighteen point two five of the series municipal code, while excess vehicular parking areas beyond the minimum required to be gravel surfaces and with certain conditions. Uh, exempt per section one five zero six one B three. Review for exemption. It's staff report on this, please.
Uh, yes, so uh, this uh, has a little bit of history to it. Um, but the reason that uh, this is important is that there are a few uh, properties throughout the city that currently have dirt uh, parking lots that are considered excess to what their paved parking uh, is. So, for example, uh, and we have a couple members of um, of representatives of El Ramatito Flea Market here tonight. Um, so they may want to comment on this as well. Um, because this may affect them. So there are, like I said, there are some cer- certain properties in the city that have paved parking. And um, in the case of El Ramatito, they have something like fifteen hundred uh, paved parking spaces. And um, these, these properties um, also have like a dirt area that's adjacent, um, also owned by the same property owner. And they um, sometimes have people park on that, on those dirt areas. Um, last year, there was a dust complaint. And so the city said, uh, sent a letter saying um, that they couldn't park on that dirt lot. Um, so subsequent to that and lots of meetings and brainstorming, um, and in the case of El Ramatito, uh, the dirt lot next to their paved parking area is, is um, on the general plan that's designated for uh, residential in the future. So if a parking lot were to be put in uh, and paved in that area and then later changed into like a, some kind of residential development, then that parking lot would have to be ripped out, which would um, be more expensive to do that. It would be kind of a waste to do that. Um, and the main concern that we're trying to solve here is um, allowing so people to park safely while not creating dust problems. Um, and we, we also wanted to find a way that the minimum required parking would still be paved, so that, that still is in, is in effect. So, for example, if you have a store, if you have a use like a church and they have um, a paved parking lot, that paved parking lot has to be at the minimum size based on the size of their use. So if you have a, you know, a certain square footage for the use and our zoning ordinance requires X number of parking spaces, all of those minimum parking spaces will continue, even with this proposal will continue to be required to be paved, and that includes ADA parking, um, and landscaping and lighting. All of that required minimum will, will continue to exist. Um, the, the proposal is that if there is additional parking beyond the minimum, that it, this proposal would allow um, that area to either be paved or to be gravel. If it's gravel, then it needs to follow certain conditions. Um, for example, the surface of the parking area shall be either paved or consist of a uniform layer of gravel, evenly distributed from edge to edge and shall be free of bare spots and vegetation. So if weeds start growing up, then that will have to be maintained and and we can sort that out by, by um, requiring the, the property owner to maintain it based on that condition. Um, the second is that the depth of the gravel layers shall be at least two inches and shall be maintained by the property owner. So that, that is uh, based on research, looking at other cities and seeing how much gravel would be necessary. And if that two-inch layer of gravel um, sinks into the dirt, then we could come back and, and check it and, and ask them to put it back two inches, because that's what the requirement is, is to have, maintain that two inches of, of gravel. Um, the third item is um, that the size of the gravel, we don't want it to be really big rocks that could cause damage, and we don't want it to be like a fine sand, because that would be ineffective. So it has to be a certain size, and that's what that one's about. And what happens over time is some of the smaller pieces of gravel will sink to the bottom. And we don't want that, that base of sand or smaller pieces to be counted among, amongst the two inches of required um, of the required gravel area. Um, also, we, we're concerned about drainage. And having, and having a paved parking lot will um, create one hundred percent runoff of stormwater, which means you have to have larger uh, more expensive storm drain systems to retain that water. Whereas uh, gravel parking as an, again, as an excess or an overflow parking area, I'm not talking about the the minimum required part, paved parking will still require, you'll still have to have a stormwater retention plan for that. But for the, for the gravel area, the rainwater falls on it, and because it's pervious and permeable, the, the water can infiltrate just like in a field, um, like an agricultural field. And so the storm runoff is, is much lower, as if it were more of a natural landscape. Um, so the overall site drainage, we don't want um, we don't want the paved or impervious areas or rooftops to drain stormwater onto um, the gravel areas. They should still be routed towards uh, stormwater retention basins where that, that's the proper where, place for it to be um, collected. But also for the, the surface drainage for the water that falls on the gravel areas, we don't want that to be redirected as runoff to like other properties or the public street or anything like that. So we've written that as, those are conditions four and five. They can only direct that stormwater to uh, pervious surfaces like landscaped areas or just a parking lot itself. And it has to remain on site. Um, number six is that uh, an apron, which is a, a surface made of concrete or asphalt would need to be built adjacent to a driveway that leads to a public street. And it needs to be at least twenty feet in depth before you get to the gravel parking area, because um, that, that twenty feet of depth will allow, if there's any loose gravel that does get kicked up off the parking area, we don't want it to be so close to the street that it gets onto our street. Um, so that, that get, that apron gives us a buffer from having any issues with um, with tracking that, that material. And um, actually, the next one is number seven. It, uh, mud and gravel tracked on the public roads from gravel parking areas shall be cleaned and removed by the responsible property owner. So if somehow there is any issue with that, then we can go back to this and, and make sure that the property owner cleans up anything. But it should be mitigated or lessened or reduced uh, by that apron. And then number eight um, talks about um, And then number eight, um, talks about, um, lighting. So we were concerned that if there's, um, nighttime parking, um, after the sun goes down, then we wanted it to be safer with some kind of lighting. So if the property owner allows this parking area, this gravel parking area to be accessible to the public during nighttime hours, then it needs to be lit appropriately. Um, if they, they close it off during nighttime hours, then lighting would not be required. And, uh, number nine, the last one is that landscaping would not be required for the gravel parking area. Now, we still require our, our paved parking areas to be five percent landscaped. Um, that's our city standard. Um, but running irrigation lines and, um, a lot of the extras that you'd have to do with like concrete curbs and other things to, to, uh, create landscaped areas and gravel parking defeats the purpose of, of this, uh, defeats the purpose of this ordinance proposal. So those are the, those are the items that we're looking at. Um, staff talked with the Public Works Department, um, the Engineering Department, the City Attorney and consulted with also, uh, various property owners that this may affect, um, including El Ramatito and others. And, um, we're, we tried to get, um, you know, the best input and feedback that we could to create, uh, this proposal as, as best we could. We did do it independently, but we did it with their in, with everyone's input. And I worked closely with other department heads of the city to make sure that this makes sense, that it's safe, that it, it, um, will not cause damage, um, to other properties or to the public infrastructure. And all of those items, um, have been satisfactorily, um, resolved. So, uh, staff is, is, uh, is, uh, interested in, in presenting this to the planning commission and, uh, we do recommend approval on this. Now, if this were to be approved, then it will go to City Council. And, uh, because it's a zoning, zoning ordinance update, the City Council will also have a chance to, um, receive public comment and to, uh, vote on this. And then it, it could become, uh, with their approval as well, it could become part of our zoning ordinance. And, um, I'd love to hear any questions you have and hear from the public. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
It's from the commission.
Yes. They have people going out. First go around to the third commission now. After. So the property owner is, uh, responsible for maintaining it. And as far as staff monitoring, um, we would treat this like pretty much any other project. If someone's building a fence or a house or something and they try to sneak it past us without getting permits. Just because of the people power that we have, we're not able to catch every, every possible code violation. But, uh, when we hear about it, then we can act on it. So we are, um, complaint driven reactionary. And that's how, that's how pretty much all, uh, zoning violations, uh, work is that we, we try to keep a pulse on the community. And we, we have open doors, so we're, we're always open to looking at any project. It is two inches. Yeah. So I, I think if, if there, if, if that two-layer, uh, two inches of gravel is insufficient, then we'll hear about it and we'll require the, the property owner to fix it.
Yeah, I suppose an approval could have included an opportunity to review it at some point in time after it's been used for some time. A question I have, I didn't hear anything in those eight or nine conditions or whatever they were about, uh, how are we going to guarantee no dust? Because depending on the soil type out there and the kind of gravel we're using, the size of it, the weight, the material itself, it could get, gravel can be dusty. And do we have anything to make sure that doesn't happen? Because I think dust was the original complaint that we've seen with non-paved parking in the past.
Uh, generally speaking, the gravel will, will perform, uh, in a superior way in comparison to a dirt lot. So, uh, this would be an improvement, but, um, as far as the type of gravel, um, it's an interesting, um, idea to bring up. And I think that we, we could, we could evaluate that.
Yeah, I'm no geologist. I just want to make sure we're not generating dust out there. And I know there's ways of doing that. There are gravel lots. It probably works, probably have some thoughts on that. They're the technical people that would probably take a look at that, make sure if we build something in this to guarantee that it basically doesn't create dust. Uh, however, that has to work. And that could be a combination of factors, uh, depending on depending on factors like the soil or the rock or the size of the rock. The shape of the rock, you know, a sharp rock is going to break off and get dusty or quicker. I've had some experience with the gravel roads, which were pretty dusty. And I, I can't say that I have any answers. I just concerned that we've had, make sure we can control dust as, as part of this, since we're talking about a non-paved part. One way or another, I'd like to see some sort of language put in there, requirement put in there, uh, what, either in the ordinance. I, I think it probably should be in the ordinance, but it could, it's probably a, a part of the permit process as well. I'm not sure which. I haven't really thought that out. Just what came, came to mind in listening to it. You seem to address pretty much everything except that topic, to my ears anyway. Anyone else have any comments?
So what is the main driver for the proposal? Is it dust or stormwater?
It's kind of a combination. Um, so the dust issue is what precipitated it. Um, the stormwater is, is, um, a, a positive outcome of this, uh, proposal because it, it, it's, it's good to have as much, uh, natural infiltration of stormwater, um, because that lessens the load on all of our stormwater control measures. The more pervy, the more impervious, um, impermeable, um, surfaces that we have, for example, pavement or rooftops, um, the more stormwater we have to control.
Well, it looks like if approved, the whole burden come on the director, right?
Uh, yes, and the parking ordinance in, uh, previous sections, uh, for example, the landscaping section is, um, by the, basically by the approval of the Director of Community Development as well as the lighting. So this follows the kind of that pattern of, it, 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 it's a way to, um, keep, keep the project within what is good at practice of planning and, and, uh, development. Without having the burden of, you know, bringing a project for, for example, what kinds of trees need to go into a parking lot and bringing that to the planning commission, that, that might be overburdened some.
What else? Okay, well then let's, uh, oh, certainly, sorry.
I just want to make clear that the, uh, difference between a dusty road and a gravel parking lot, a dusty, uh, gravel road and a parking lot is the vehicular speed.
Good point. Well, at this point, let's open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak on this matter? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Nelson Gomez. I'm the representative of El Ramatito, uh, Pedro on Canada Market, who are here in the audience tonight. This particular amendment to the ordinance is something that came forward, uh, due to a situation that happened uh, between the city of Series back in the summer of twenty twenty-two. I think that this, this matter is brought up, uh, in the public meeting, uh, of the Planning Commission, first meeting of October of this. We've worked with the city staff to try to get a amendment that would not only meet the requirements of the city, but also would take into consideration the kinds of situations that we have around the city of Series. The situation of the Ramatito is that Ramatito has an extremely, what I would call a beautiful parking lot of over eighteen hundred pave unit, uh, parking spots, uh, between Hackett and Pedro Marquez Avenue of Cross Landing. I don't know how many of you have seen that, but there's fencing, there's landscaping, there's some lighting, there's all kinds of things, uh, related to this particular business. What we're talking about is an additional seven acres, the rear part of the business that would be allowed to have additional parking because there are times here when these folks may need an overflow parking. And therefore, our people should be permitted to park there. People were parking there in the dirt. Someone complained and said, uh, there's dust coming out from the parking in the rear of this particular, uh, parking lot. And so issue came forward and we've dealt with it, this particular issue with city staff. I want to point out to you that El Ramatito is not the only business in the city of Series that has this problem. I don't know how many of you know about the soccer field that the city has over Hatch Road. There is a parking area and there is a dirt excess parking where many people park just like they do at the Ramatito, uh, when there is a soccer tournament. Also, another business, another business or another, uh, entity that has a problem is Saint Jude's Church. This church has a parking, but it also has an area of dirt that is used by the folks that go to the church when there is an overflow problem. And so this is a problem that needs to be tackled. What we're trying to do with staff is to find a solution that would be best serve the interests of the city and also of the property owners, not just the Ramadito, perhaps others that would also be in the same position and would like to be able to have ability to have excess parking without the onerous requirements that are of a part, uh, paved parking lot with all of the other things. And so we are in support of this particular amendment. Uh, we believe that it meets all those requirements. And, uh, I would answer any questions you may have. But we are, uh, our, my client is in support of this particular change in the order. Addition to the ordinance.
Excuse me, any questions? You have any thoughts on the dust topic?
On the what?
The dust topic. Excuse my voice tonight. It's not very good.
What we're, what we're trying to do is, uh, I think that what staff is trying to do, you're asking me about the dust? Yeah. What we're trying to do is to be able to, um, obtain a bid from a contractor that does this that would be able to beat the requirements of the dust that would not be. That's why some of those requirements that are minimum here are, are contained in the, my client has asked for bids on a parking lot, gravel parking lot that would in fact provide the greatest protection against us. Do not want to have dust either for the clients of El Ramatito nor for adjacent property. And I think that the, the key is to try to, uh, do, uh, that particular, um, seven acres in such a way that would in fact, uh, not have that problem. We don't know whether there will be a problem in the future, but I, I think that my client's aware that they would have to address it if it became a problem and so forth. But, uh, we are trying to better a situation that we think, uh, has, uh, come up. And that's the goal of this particular amendment. I think that Mr. Hom would agree that that's what we're trying to do. And, uh, and so it's, uh, we would encourage the planning commission to, uh, approve this particular, uh, solution. So that we can hopefully have a parking, additional parking that would be able to prevent the problem.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Okay.
So you mentioned, how many parkings already are allowed in that paved area?
In the, in the, in the additional area?
No, within your, um, your fenced area, the paved parking, it's eighteen hundred?
In the fence area, there's been, when it originally started, the area had about seven hundred parking spaces. When it, it went up to eleven hundred parking spaces. And the latest expansion was done in the late twenty-tens when, uh, Pedro Marquez Avenue was in fact, uh, developed. And at that point, it went up, I, I think the city has about fifteen hundred of the number of parking spaces. But, uh, our engineers tell us that it's in excess of eight hundred and sixty-six parking spots or that are paved.
Okay.
For that establishment.
And then.
This would be in addition to the eighteen hundred and sixty-six pay parking spaces that would be used. And El Ramatito, the hours of operation are from about six A M. to about six P M. So not normally in nighttime. So, uh, that, that would be an issue here.
And then it, that excess parking, how many more cars does that hold?
We do not know, uh, how many more it would hold. We haven't done a study for that. But I would say that it would probably hold about half of, uh, of the number. It's seven acres. Uh, our goal is not to use that as a primary parking, but rather as an overflow parking. Uh, and that make it in such a way that would in fact, uh, be in addition to on days where there's there's an, an, a great amount of people that want to come and shop at a limit.
Thank you.
Assuming the gravel isn't marked for parking, it's just open. Would there be somebody there to park?
Yeah, it's.
Cars on, on days where it's used?
Sure. It, it, I think that it's, it is our goal that everybody would buy and I, I, they already have at the entrance of the main parking lot, some attendance that, that guide the people in. And I would say that my client has been an extremely responsible, uh, property owner and business owner that he would, uh, encourage and have folks to help people park in that area so that it would be an order to park.
Thank you. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Pratt.
Uh, Dave Pratt of Series. Yeah, we, um, talking about the popular place, you know, yeah. It's just like the flea market downtown Modesto. They had to make changes because they were parking everywhere. And it was causing a lot of traffic hazards. But, uh, but it was turned down because of dusty fields. I know I talked about the church and, and the soccer fields. But those are kept up and they're not allowed to have dust when they are. And maybe they do need to be gravelled also. When you talk about their, this was turned down because of the dust contents and, and, and basically it wasn't really kept up. And now you're talking about putting gravel out there. So they cut down on that dust overflow parking. And I've seen, you know, it, it's amazing that a lot of events goes on. You can see them parking everywhere, down the roadways, roadways and every, and and a lot of time, and hopefully they do have somebody to manage the, the parking area, overflow parking area because people don't park straight. And so we'll see how that goes. I might go, uh, I'm, I wasn't too bad because it got turned down last year because of the dust and stuff. And they, they weren't happy about leaving. But if they're, if you, if you're going to gravel it, that changes, that's going to change.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this matter? Please come forward. Okay, seeing no one. Do we have anyone on Zoom wanting to speak on this matter?
I see no hands raised at this time.
I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay. I guess with that, we can close the public hearing. Bring it back to the commission for additional discussion and action.
Yeah, just reminder especially. Recommending to the city council tonight. Not the official. That's, that's a good news. That's good, that's new for the public too. They not be. They have to prove it. With that, I'll make a recommendation.
Well, any comments? Okay, you're, you're on a roll.
Okay. I, I recommend, uh, the approved, accept the proposal considered in secret guideline section 1506. True for extension, recommend the city council approve the proposed zoning ordinance tech amendment. DOTA 2303, we're finally listed under draft PC revolution.
Second for that?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion this second. We'll call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Del Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Otero.
Aye.
Commissioner Jamu.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. And Chairperson Katchel.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
And this will be scheduled that planning, it's at the, uh, city council at some point in the near future.
Yes.
Okay. Back to our agenda, new business, we have none. Public meetings, we have none. Unbis- unfinished business, we have none. Matters initiated by planning commission and staff, nothing. Reports, any commissioners or anything we'd like to report? You sure? Okay. He had, dust isn't an issue right now, is it? I attended the mayor's state of the city address last Thursday, I believe it was. And I learned a lot. There's a lot going on in, uh, you went through all the different departments, all the things that we don't see here or doesn't even necessarily get reported. Um, public works has got all kinds of things going on that we don't normally see. Was interesting to hear about what, what's happening in the city. Um, second one of these I've been to in a row and, uh, I find it very useful and, uh, informative and it's kind of a social net, show, social networking opportunity as well. So, uh, was time well spent, I thought. Do we have a city attorney tonight?
Yes, Christian Schmidt here with the city attorney's office. I have nothing to report. I'd just like to add that the Zoom stream has been very clear. And I'd like to thank the commission and city staff for an excellent meeting tonight.
Thank you for being there. Appreciate it. City staff.
Um, I have some very good news. Uh, we have a new building permit technician. Her name is Rhonda Rose. And, um, I hope to have some further very good news at our next, uh, planning commission meeting on March 20th. So look out for that.
Okay.
I'm on pins and needles.
At this time, we don't have anything. We're just supporting the planning, the planning commission.
Well, thank you very much. We need all the support we can get. It's appreciated. Nothing else. Okay. Any of these decisions can of course be appealed to the city council. And at this point, we will adjourn our planning commission to our next meeting, which will be held on Monday, March 20th, 2023. Meeting adjourned.